If we could come to order. Six oh one, we'll call this meeting to order. We could begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to adjust the agenda a little bit, and we are going to begin with some students who took part in the this year's oratorical contest. Mr. Hawkins?
Good evening. I'm gonna jump right to introducing Mr. Doherty and Ms. Clark.
Yeah.
They're gonna come up and give you a brief overview and then introduce the students to come up and...
Hello.
Hi.
The eighth grade oratorical is a research and public speaking unit in which students select an area of interest, develop a research question, conduct research, and write a speech to deliver to their classmates. For eighth graders, this is not an easy task. Mrs. Clark?
The students assembled here are our top three in the Hampton Academy Oratorical Finals after being selected as one of the top speeches in their class. Tonight, they will read their opening paragraphs to give you a sample of what they accomplished in this unit. In third place, we had Hannah Edgar, whose speech is entitled "The Attention Crisis of Today." In second place, we had Maeve Willett, whose speech was entitled "Should Artificial Intelligence Be Allowed to Control Cars?"
In first place, we had Ryan Rosberg, "Envy the Not-So-Deadly Sin." So, we're gonna have them come up. Third place, Hannah, come on up, and she's gonna deliver her opening.
Hello, everyone. Forty seconds. Forty seconds is the average attention span of an American adult, and it's even less for developing youth and teens. Britannica defines attention as "a state of mind that represents the shifting focus of one's consciousness." There is no doubt that the attention spans of adults and teens are getting shorter because of many factors. The question is, how long can you go without checking your email, a text, a notification? By learning new ways to refocus, we can begin to reverse the effect of these factors on the human brain. Some may argue that their attention span does not need to be lengthened, when the truth is quite the opposite. Everyone can grow their attention span, no matter where their starting point is. So, it's been forty seconds. Are you still paying attention, or have you zoned out? Thank you.
Next, we have Maeve with her speech, "Should Artificial Intelligence Be Allowed to Control Cars?" Maeve?
Imagine, it's about two years from now, and you've just turned sixteen. You're eager to drive, step on the gas and go. But what if none of that existed in two years? What if you were told that driverless cars are the new reality? In less than five years, driverless cars could become a reality, but should they be? AI should not be allowed to control road vehicles. AI has many ethical risks because it can be hacked and is unsecure. Studies also show that AI is not yet intelligent enough. This technology is only as good as it's programmed. Artificial intelligence is becoming more and more available and may become a reality in many areas of life very soon. However, it is ethically risky and should not be used in road vehicles. Thank you.
And finally, we have our oratorical winner, and that's Ryan Rosberg with his speech entitled "Envy the Not-So-Deadly Sin." Ryan?
There is a fable about a mule and a lapdog. The lapdog was favored and could be described as the prize pet because all the mule was useful for was to plow the fields. Naturally, the mule was envious. Envy is the desire to have a quality possession or other desirable attribute belonging to someone else. Envy could be split up into many different categories, such as what you feel when you're envious, the harsh side effects of long-term envy, and lastly, the benefits that you can get from envy. When you aren't careful on how you control your emotions, it can lead to serious negative effects down the road. The bottom line is, too much envy can destroy you. But if you listen to my speech, I can educate you on how to use envy to your advantage. Thank you.
I wanted to hear the rest of his speech.
Yeah, I did.
Do you guys have any questions for them?
I did, I had one.
Come on up.
Is it Maeve? When you gave your presentation, did you use notes, or did you have it kind of committed to memory?
I did.
No teleprompter or anything? Good for you. Good for you. Questions from the board? They were very good, all three of them, had my interest.
Yep. They'll be going to the Rotary on the thirtieth, so they're gonna be presenting to the Hampton Rotary on the thirtieth also, for the breakfast.
Andrea? Andrea, put your microphone on.
Yeah.
So, their speeches are on shock news, and we can see that? Okay, awesome, because we do wanna hear.
Yeah.
And some of the others I've heard were very topical.
They do an incredible job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ready for the real world. I don't know about politics, but you're ready for the real world.
And I think we're gonna get some pictures of you.
Was I able to get some when you were doing them, believe it or not, but I'm happy to take them.
Your parents here?
With your parents, or whatever day it was.
It's like when you get married.
Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you. Nice job. As I said, we're gonna move around this agenda a little bit. So, right now, I'm gonna ask Mr. Jamie Sullivan, our town manager, to come and address the board. Good evening, Jamie.
I am certainly envious of the speaking abilities of those young people who kept my attention. We'll all need AI to keep up with them in the future, I suspect.
That's right.
Why am I here tonight? After speaking with Dr. Costa, she invited me in to speak to the board about the Coalition of Communities 2.0. For folks who don't know what that is, when back in history and education funding in the state back in the nineties, in the state working through how to fund an adequate education, came a process known as donor towns and receiver towns. And Hampton, back then, was a donor town. Over the years, there was a group of the initial Coalition of Communities, those donor towns, so to speak, got together and put together a group to advocate for a funding methodology that might eliminate that, accomplish the goals, yet not create these donor town-receiver towns. That was successful, and it led to where we are today, which is, we don't have donor towns, receiver towns. They swept the statewide educational property tax. We retain the excess, and it's not basically giving our tax dollars to the state, who then distribute it to others. It looks like, however, that there are moves again to bring back that donor town circumstance. So, in 2021, a group of towns got together, Hampton was one of them, and had some conversations about some pieces of legislation that were popping up on this issue. Some of those had a funding methodology that would've had us, as the town of Hampton, giving really frightening numbers of our tax dollars to the state to distribute to other folks. So, the Board of Selectmen at that time agreed it'd be an idea for us to join that group and to stay on top of these issues. So, we did, and that's continued through its three-year cycle, and we're beginning again now. And so, as a part of that, all of the towns that are involved, the 27 of us, have dues to fund essentially the lobbyists and the folks who keep track of this legislation for all of us, and can help advocate the points to find what we feel is a fairer method to fund an adequate education without creating these towns battling with one another. So, that leads to why we're here to talk. The dues this year is $21,680, our dues for that, and given our budget situation with the default budget at the town, I had had some conversations with Dr. Costa and Mariah, we would like to ask the school board to see if it's possible for you to help us share in that cost. So, that's really the sum of it. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, the Coalition of Communities, there is a website. It is the coalitioncommunities.com, and it shows the public meetings of that board, has a joint board of folks that oversee it. The minutes are posted, what they're doing is posted, so anybody who wants to look at it can do so. Happy to answer any questions or take any feedback.
I have a question for you. Did you say Hampton's total share was $21,680?
Correct, for the dues for this period.
Okay. Frank?
Yes. I was just curious and wondering. Last night, Wendy and I attended a legislative meeting at Winnicott High School, and we had several representatives of the town present, and the adequate education situation did come up, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the legislative body removed $181 million from funding, school funding, was that correct, last night? Back to the general fund?
Um, I'm not looking at it in front of me. It's, everything is right now.
It was a sizable amount that was moved.
There's a hundred, they said there's a $180 million surplus in the Education Trust Fund, yes.
Which was moved into the general fund.
Which they are looking, I don't think it's actually been... Yeah. They are looking to move it into the general fund and change all of that. That's right. There's some capes to that, too.
The budget writers moved its first part, it's into the second phase, correct.
Which again, pressure on the towns in general and the tax base.
One other thing I neglected to indicate is that there are two additional lawsuits that are currently ongoing. One began in Rockham County just this week that are on this topic, so we have yet to see what those rulings will be, and I think that's why the legislature kind of tabled some of their decisions of what they were gonna do until these two things made their way through the system. So, we think it's an appropriate and a smart thing for us to really stay on top of this, be involved with these communities, and advocate for our position of our communities, because, you know, the impact could be quite substantial.
Other questions from the board? Comments?
Unfunded expense for us so far. We have a budget.
This was not in our budget, and I was just gonna ask Jamie, was it in the town's budget?
No, we've been taking it from other places and dealing with it as we moved along. We haven't had it as a line item, and even in the default, it likely wouldn't have changed from what we did last year. So, we were adjusting from someplace else and taking the dues from there.
Would this be an ongoing issue?
Really, it depends. We've committed for two more years. The first, we committed for two, we commit for two more. We can withdraw at any time, and, you know, there are methods in the MOU that would allow the town to withdraw from it, but there is, you know, some financial aspects of that that we'd have to work through.
So, has it been worth the money? Sorry, sorry. So, Jamie, do you feel like it's been worth the $21,000 a year so far?
Yeah, I think to quantify it, I think for us to step back and just let it roll is probably not prudent. I think it's important for us to stay on top of it so that we can get our legislatures and get, you know, legislators, should something come up, to advocate for our position.
And I think, what is the ask? Are you wanting to split it fifty-fifty?
That would be ideal for us, but, you know, we'll take whatever you can share with us.
What was your plan?
We are moving an awful lot of chairs around, Ginny, that's what we're doing.
I suppose...
Yeah.
And I suppose...
It did not.
Don't work from the budget?
No, that's a whole nother process. Something else doesn't get done, just as what happens with all our budgets during the year.
They have a bottom-line budget.
Yeah.
I know you know that. I wasn't telling you.
But that whole discussion of UFB gets people confused. It is not what we're talking about for this, no.
If it comes out of the unfunded, then it has to be a warrant article.
But I think, in all honesty, we should look for it, you know? Mariah needs to sharpen her pencil, and we'll have to get together, but I think we need to support that endeavor moving forward.
As long as we don't continually...
Well, I think...
It's getting lower and lower.
We can make it a line item budget next year.
For next year, yeah.
That, when we sit down and do the budget in the fall, we can make it a line item budget. And I'm sure you guys are gonna do the same thing.
Well, I was gonna ask you a question. If, this $21,680, just throwing that out, this would cover until what, July 1st, and then it starts a whole nother round?
Yeah, the bills come out in February, so it's a calendar year, basically. Yeah.
Till next...
Oh, it's calendar year.
For us, yeah.
So, next February.
Our dues were due in February, and I've kind of been stalling off on this for a little bit to see what we do.
Okay.
So, this would come out of this year's budget, not the one that was just the first year?
Right. So, we're looking for $10,840?
Well, I'm not committed to making a decision tonight, because I don't know where and if you can find it.
So, I have a few things to add.
We'll take what you can share, if you can.
We could look at, and that was what I was just saying to Mariah, just seeing your microphone, we could look, we do have a legal fund, and the question would be, what's in our legal fund? We are at the end of the year, so it is that time of year where we could look and see, but I think that that would be wise, if we did actually create a line item, if that's just the way we wanna go. But I know that Mariah is in the process of looking at all accounts, as we are in April and all of that, but I think we could definitely look, right?
And I think this...
No, I definitely think it's something that we should support.
Yeah, we wanna support it, so, because it benefits all of us.
Well, I agree. I think the alternative is gonna be something none of us wanna be dealing with, and I highly encourage you folks, it's an education issue, to stay on top of this issue, because the numbers that were bandied about in some of the pieces of legislation were scary. Really scary.
Really scary, yes.
And that would be money that would come out of our town and go to someplace else, and that's gonna challenge all of us, our schools, our towns, everybody, so it pays to pay attention.
Agreed.
Okay. So, I'm guessing that we would put this on next month's agenda, and Mariah will come to us and have an idea, and we can make a formal decision then.
I should have a conclusion with my ESR grant information by then.
Jamie, I'm not thinking you have to reappear next month.
Appreciate it.
We get the gist of it.
Appreciate it, and thank you for taking me tonight and listening to us. We appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. School board updates, budget, Ginny?
Catherine McPhee is the new chairman.
Rather than go through all of these, is there any...
Sorry, Amber.
Rather than go through, rather than go through all of these, is there anybody who has anything from their committee? Frank, Wendy?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, let's see. Mine'll be quick. I've got PTA and rec departments. So, PTA had a great turnout at the Wizards game. They were all sold out for that. What they do have coming up is April 20th through the 29th. They have a fundraising week at the Brook, which is always a good time. They are going to have a parents' night out. It's gonna be a comedy night featuring Josh Day. That's gonna be Thursday, the 27th, at 8:00 PM. You can get a little discount on that if you buy those tickets ahead of time, or you can also buy them at the door. Let's see, what else do we have? Sorry. This week is Week of Wonder at Center, which I think is going well. And for the rec department, they had a great time at the evening Easter egg hunt over at Marston. That was really great. And the fishing derby is coming up on April 29th, so you can get registered for that. And last but not least, they have started putting out their camps for the summer. I saw Hoops Camp with Mr. McKenna and Robotics Camp, so those are gonna be some fun things to do with your kids over the summer, so take a look at the rec department website. You can start getting your kids signed up for those now.
Any other committee reports? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Happy April. Busy month at Center School. The past, actually, six weeks or so, we're doing a ton of literacy activities. I wanna share one of the highlights of the past several weeks, is that the whole school participated in a book called "One School, One Book," and the book we did together, this is, every student got a copy, and we all participated in reading this each and every night, a chapter every night, and there were tons of activities and trivia and literacy games that went on with it. They put Mr. Lannan in a squirrel costume, and I get to wear a squirrel costume and run around and pretend I was one of the characters at Twitch, and I was Twitch, and I read the chapter of Twitch, and so I think, you know, in my advanced age, just put Lannan in a costume and let him...
I did two nights of that, and it was awesome.
We had a good time.
Kids were so engaged. I just was...
So, we're gonna do this again next year. It came, it really pumped up literacy in the school, and we had a really, we had a ball doing it, so I just wanna highlight that. I know you're gonna ask about kindergarten. We have 81 students registered, so it's really good. It's, we're about 15 or 20 ahead of where we were at this time last year, so it's, that's, it bodes well for us and the future of how we're doing and filling our grades in classrooms, so that's awesome. We're in the middle of Week of Wonder, and so it's a little chaotic as the Week of Wonder goes on. We have activities, three or four activities a day through the PTA, which is great. The school is hopping and buzzing. On top of that, we have our own after-school activities we continue to do, so that is fun. Thursday evening, we're doing a family literacy math night, book fair, so that's as part of our culmination event of literacy for the month of April as well, so we're excited for that big event at the school. We are back to normal with these type of events, with night events. We're doing the literacy night in April. We're gonna bring back the ice cream social in May, and then we're gonna do the field day in June. These are all events where parents are gonna be involved and active in the school and coming into the school once a month, which, it's really nice with the warm weather, we can do that. So, we're excited about all these events. You had an opportunity to take a look at my newsletter, which is, involves a lot of information in my board report. Do you have any questions for Center School?
Any questions for Mr. Lannan?
Just one. Where did the idea come from for that book?
Yeah, so we have various committees at the school, and we have literacy committees and enrichment committees, and we meet on a monthly basis, and they all came up with the idea. It just, it was really nice, it was a great idea.
Especially for some child who's not a real reader, this was like...
We all took turns reading the chapters, so there's videos of us reading. I think Dr. Costa read one, and some leadership people, and I read some.
Really pulled the non-readers in, which I thought was good.
A lot of people, but Mrs. Dunham actually took the lead on this, so congratulations to her. She's our language arts target assist teacher. Frank, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to know how we're progressing, or I know we're just in the beginning stages of enrollment for kindergarten.
Yeah, we have about 81 kids in there. We have six teachers planned, so we're almost practically where we, it's our target area right now. If we have, you know, 90, 96 kids, that's 16 in the class, so we're on target. We're really on pace to fill those classrooms up, which is really good. It's exciting news.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, have a great night, everyone.
Hello. Busy time of year, as you could probably tell from our board report. Lots of events and activities going on, some of them, you know, funded through the school, the PTA, but also due to some trailing ESR funds that we still have, so a lot of guest speakers, special events, field trips and things that'll be taking place, you know, in the next few months. But just a couple of updates. Placement letters, again, for parents that might be watching, are due this Friday, and that, of course, is for third going into fourth, fourth going into fifth, and fifth going into sixth. Obviously, anything regarding second to third should be sent to Mr. Lannan, and he'll share that with us, but they do place those students at our school, and then we, of course, work closely with Hampton Academy to place our students going into sixth grade, so we just need something in writing. I know a lot of parents discussed this with their teachers at parent-teacher conferences last month, but when we have it documented, it's easier during our placement process, so that will be due by Friday. Just a big shout-out to our three APs, Mrs. Hughes, Mrs. Hayward, and Mrs. Henderson, as last week was Assistant Principal Appreciation Week, so I was an AP in this district for seven years. I know the ins and outs of that job and how rigorous it can be, so I just wanna thank all three of them for their hard work and their leadership in our district. They do a phenomenal job, so kudos.
And I write next.
Next week is Volunteer Appreciation Week, so just a big thank you to our PTA. Obviously, Mrs. Rega talked about some of the phenomenal events and activities they have going on. They will also be hosting our Screen Free Week, the first week we come back from May, and it's Week of Wonder at Center. It's Screen Free Week. We didn't have enough volunteers to put on our Wicked Wonderful Wednesday program, which is consecutive Wednesdays, so we're gonna do it over the course of one week, and information will be coming out later this week about that, and then signups will be up and all of that, if you, our children are interested in participating in events and activities that are screen-free after school. New Hampshire SAS is... New Hampshire SAS is going to start up in April with English Language Arts for our grade-five students. And then in May, grade-three and four will take ELA and math. And then, of course, our fifth-grade students also participate in the science assessment, and that'll be completed, you know, over the month mostly of May and into June. I think our, our end date is either June 4th or June 14th for when those assessments need to be completed. So information will come home about that, but making sure your child gets a good rest and eats a healthy breakfast and all of those things. And just really, we're looking for kids just to try their best. It's their chance to show what they know and showcase their talents. And then on April 19th, there'll be an art show at Lane Library, you know, part of the, kind of the Hampton Arts Network. But I know all three schools, including, I believe, Sacred Heart, have some artwork on display now. And it's just a great event to celebrate some of the wonderful artists in our school and in our community. And we do, at all three schools, have some extremely talented students who take quite an interest in the art. So if you, you know, you're interested, swing by Lane Library, and then, of course, try to attend that. And the final thing is just Administrative Professionals Day is on April 26th, and so we just like to give big kudos to all three schools and our office staff. You know, they are kind of the front lines of our school and the name and the face when you call in or stop by. So they work extremely hard, and I'd just like to give them the recognition and the kudos that they deserve. But otherwise, you have my report, so if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Ginny?
No.
Andrea? Frank?
Nope.
Wendy?
Wonderful. Enjoy the night. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hawkins?
Good evening again. We've been really busy. Harlem Wizards game was wonderful, and I wanted to thank the PTA. My son actually played with us, and he's a junior in high school. I didn't think I'd be able to make it all the way through the game, so I was like, I got to bring him in for, so they bought him a T-shirt, and he had a wonderful time playing. The, you saw our oratoricals. We have a lot going on just even this week. We have our Quebec Parent Night, and it's the same night as our eighth-grade Parent Night, getting ready to go to DC. Kids are very excited about that. We have our Bikes for Books that are going on up in the, up in the library. Mary Saunders is also running a Read-A-Thon. We have, I just did the numbers, and we probably have close to 180 kids signed up for either track, baseball, or softball, with the majority probably around 145 kids who are running track. It's interesting doing the the buses at the end of the day when track practice is going on, because it goes by really, really quickly. There's, I feel like there's 10 kids coming out of the building. And if you drive by at the end of the day, the practices that are going on on the field out there is, we got a lot of kids. And our first track meet is actually over when it kind of tomorrow, so it's just wonderful to see all the kids involved. Pam Thompson's doing a wonderful job with the, all of the track kids, so. The, I don't know if you want me to go into the Puerto Rico trip right now, or hold off on it for a few minutes, or?
Whatever you think. I know you have more of a presentation to present. So why don't we hold off till next month, and we'll get the whole presentation?
Yeah, it was a phenomenal trip. I traveled with my family, and one of the biggest things that you see are kids out of their environment and just being exposed to a different culture, a different language, a different way of doing things. The first stop we went to was a place called El Hamburger. Use your imagination. But on the menu, there were, there were English and there was Spanish. But for sides, there was ensalada. So some of the kids actually ordered the ensalada, thinking they were going to be getting a salad. But the ensalada is lettuce, tomato, onion. It's the sides for a hamburger. And it was the first time they were like, wait a minute, I ordered a salad. I was like, no, it's, it's different. It's very different. Just even the pace. When you sit down at a restaurant, you have to know that you're going to be there for a while. It's, it's very laid-back, and you have to ask for your check. People just don't bring it over to you. It's not, you know, it's not a fast-paced place. The historic tours that we took, the walking tour, and just getting the history of the island and when it was discovered, who was there before. The, we did a walking tour at night, and it was a food tour. So imagine taking all of the history of the island and all of the food that they produce and the dishes that they came up with, and just melding that into a lesson. The guy that we had walking around with us even told me about where the stones in the road came from. They were, you know, it was cobblestone streets. And you go to Boston, and they came over on ships. They were ballast for ships. And they would unload them, and they turned them into roads. And I was like, are those the same thing? And he was like, no, those were made in England. And they were, he explained the entire process to me. He explained even back then how the cobblestones would keep the city cooler because of what they were made out of. And now they're replacing it. And so, on and on and on. Really, really interesting pieces, and the kids were great. Just a great bunch of kids, and had a wonderful time, and, you know, I don't, I don't think they're ever going to forget the experience, so.
I have a question for you, and when you were talking about track.
Yes.
You said you have big numbers in track?
We, we have a lot of numbers, and then, so in the budget, we have one coach, who is Pam Thompson. We had three assistant coaches left over in the, and, and we knew we needed a little bit more. So we looked at some of the stipend positions, and there was one that wasn't filled yet. So we turned that one into a, but even with the numbers that you're talking one to 30 kids, probably, outside. It's a lot to manage, especially when they're, some of them are taking off running down the road or running around the building and things like that, so. Could we use extra hands? Yes.
Okay. So do we have any unused, Mariah, stipend money?
I can find stipend money for that.
I, I would greatly appreciate it, and just for the organization and safety of the kids, I think that would be hugely beneficial.
So I guess my thought is, rather than let unused stipend money sit for the next two months and whatever, if we have a need for it and you can get a body to do it, I, I'm going to make a motion that we allow Ken to do that.
Second.
Second, and Ginny? Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mariah?
Great. Aside from that, you have my board report. Any, any other questions?
Any questions for Ken?
Did everybody come through on the Washington trip?
Yes, 100%. The only reason why I don't have the breakdown for you right now is that the checks that we send in, like I downloaded the, the whole thing today, and they still haven't put it towards the students.
Okay, so, but we've made-
Everybody's good.
Good.
Yes.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. De Silva-Napton?
Hello. Hello. Let's see, so, yes, wow, the schools are just so busy. And just, you know, thank you to all the principals and the APs who are just keeping our kids moving right along during all these activities. It's really, they're swinging, and it's fun. So you have my report, and I just wanted to just give a quick shout-out about the NAC program. I really want to thank you for your faith in this endeavor. I mean, it really was a, you know, an olive branch, and you guys said, okay, and it's making a difference. And this is one of our transition years, and it, we clearly have bettered our students to be more effective in the general ed population. So I just wanted to let you know that it's, it's really made a difference for our littles. And the disproportionality, that's kind of an annual report you, we always get. It just means that we are not having high-discipline issues for students who are identified, which is a good thing. They run the report. The state keeps track of all of that, and that we are not doing that, which is good. We don't want to be disciplining our students with disabilities more than any other student. So something else I wanted to let you know, and it came after I wrote my report, but the state, I know you all are, you know, we're all looking for grants. So there is a grant leaning into literacy. It's a resource grant. It's a competitive grant. It just came out on March 30th, and we did submit our first application on the 7th of April. It's for Center School. It's for $21,000, and it's, it's for, it's to fund science of reading, evidence-based literacy curriculums. You know how they're doing all of the science of reading, and all the teachers, many, many teachers are getting this free professional development. This is allowing us to get materials for students in grades K through 6. So we have submitted our, for, one of our schools, our Center School, and we'll let you know how that goes. But it's, that is going to allow 18 classroom teachers to be equipped with core texts required to teach the lessons from the Fish Tank English Language Arts Unit's lessons in that building, so it's pretty exciting. And you have my numbers, my charts. Is there anything else I could do for you?
Any questions? Wendy? Andrea? I guess we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amber?
How is everybody? We've been busy in our department. There's been a lot of events going on, so we've been trying to make sure we're capturing all the important and exciting things happening across the district. We've also, this month, we begin our process of closing out the end of the school year. I know that sounds early, but we're already starting to look at usage for our subscriptions, what we're using, what we're not using. I've met with all the building principals and special ed department about things that teachers are using and what resources we need for next year, so we can start planning that process. We're also working with our SROs to develop plans around safety and security. And then we're just ongoing, continuing to work on updating our signage, checking Go Guardian, fixing and repairing Chromebooks. It seems like a never-ending task for some of our department. And just supporting teachers with report cards, rostering students for upcoming SAS testing. So we've been busy. Any questions? Perfect.
Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
Mr. Lasard? Evening.
Evening. Welcome spring. We had some nice warm weather today. I think everybody's happy about that. We're in the process of doing spring cleanup over April vacation. And we are gearing up for summer, which brings up one thing that I would like to make an announcement for. We are taking applications for summer hires, and we're also still looking for a full-time custodian. Appreciate anybody's support. You can get the applications online at sau90.org, or you can reach us the old-fashioned way by calling us up at 603-926-4560 and press 1. Thank you very much.
I, I know you, the summer is a hard time, cleaning the school, you know, just the maintenance things that have to be done. Any bigger projects going to be going on this summer?
Hope to get some big projects going. The ventilation project at Center School, we're hopefully opening some good positive bids. We had to go up to bid again because we did not get the funding. Well, we got the funding, but it didn't meet the cost. So we have to approach the project in a different perspective, and we're working on that of splitting it up. And then we probably have to come back for more money, unfortunately. Expenses have gone through the roof for a lot of the construction. I think everybody's familiar with that. Home things. We're going to be putting out for bid on the security entrance to the SAU office and create the SAU office. It's basically going to be a separate building attached to Marston School. Those are our big projects this summer. We have a playground at Center School. We're going to work on that for preschool. Taking, we're kind of sneaking up on that, because I know there's a lot of preschool conversation going on. So we don't know quite how big and how small to actually make it. But Jamie's got a handle on that. She's got some books I think they're looking through. And those are things we hope to accomplish this summer.
And I don't know if you're familiar with this, but, well, I know you're familiar, but earlier this year, the board voted to support renaming part of a play, a ball field?
Oh, yes, yes. That, that's in process now to put up the scoreboard.
And I, I believe there's going to be a big working be this Saturday.
Sunday.
Sunday?
Sunday. That's with the rec departments.
On that field?
Yep. Yep. Renee's working on that. He's coordinating that, not myself.
Okay.
Over at Hampton Rec.
Well, this was the one, it is for the center field.
Yes, but it is Hampton Rec, and Renee and I have been talking about it.
But they are looking, they are looking for volunteers for that, just, so it's April 16th at 10:00. I don't know if that's Saturday or Sunday.
Thank you, Keith. Anybody have any questions, Keith?
Thank you. Again, we are looking for summer hires. It's a good position.
And you do have an opening right now, if somebody is anxious to get to work?
To get started, yes. We're looking for a full-time custodian. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. Mary?
I guess the only item that we wanted to discuss is the USDA requires us to update meals-charging policy and procedure, and that has not been updated in quite a few years. And even laws are updated. We have to comply. So that's it. We, I have a draft. I could send you a draft. It's an easy thing. I don't know how Lois and, you know, the, the meals-charging procedure and policy.
Is that something that should be done with our policy committee?
I don't know. We were talking about it and-
Does it get posted on the?
We were talking about procedure.
It sounds like you got one, and you're having to update it.
I was updating it.
It's a practice.
But I-
So it's more of like a practice. It's the current one, yeah, if it's not in our policy.
It's in our handbook. It would be in our handbook. So we typically would review what the charges are going to be for next year. We would update our handbook to include the charges. It's not practice, it's not part of a policy. It's just part of our handbook, which would be our practice.
But the USDA wants us to have a charge, a meals-charging policy and procedure, so we're just going to keep it in the handbook. Is that what you're saying?
Most policies are based on federal laws.
Yep.
So I guess if there's something that comes down from the School Boards Association, which it could come down, you know that after they finish with their session this spring, we'll get all kinds of policies that will follow those practices. It could be one that does come out of the, the, I guess it would be the spring updates. We would get those over the summer. We'd have to review them and look at them and start going through them for the fall. But right now, there's nothing that's been turned down to me that's, would align with that, but I think-
Yeah, it's just outdated.
It could come.
Yep. The one we have is just outdated. I have to update, so.
At some point, and I was thinking it would be the May meeting, but it could be the June meeting, we have to decide on school lunch prices.
Yep. Yeah.
Whether we change those or not is going to depend on how we, we end up.
Yep. We're working on the numbers.
So when you and Mariah kind of finish, and then we can go from there. But that should be on our radar.
Absolutely.
I, I just want to make sure we've got this clear. So the USDA is telling you that you need to have a policy and procedure.
For charging meals, school meals.
So that says to me, the word policy, we need to have a policy, explaining the procedure.
But again, it would come from the New Hampshire School Boards Association that would take into account what the USDA is looking for, which we, we can do. It's not, but we're better off to, typically, we wait for them to come up with a boilerplate, if you will, based on the recommendations to ensure that we have all the necessary components. I just would be concerned about writing our own.
No, yeah.
I know, I think this one is, didn't they give you a generic one?
Yeah, they gave me the boil plate one.
Right. And then it's more so you put it on your website and, and student handbooks so that the parents know what the procedure and policy is on collecting funds. And we can do that.
Okay. That's it.
Anything else for Mary?
Getting ready for the barbecue season.
Apparently, the federal government is talking about giving free and reduced, free lunches to, free breakfasts or lunches to every student again. Have you heard that?
There's rumors.
That's what there's rumors.
A couple of the states have approved it. Like I think Wisconsin put it through a couple of weeks ago.
Nothing in stone.
There's no law that has been passed.
Nothing in stone.
How have our sales been since the beginning of this year compared to pre-COVID?
I'm working on all those numbers. I got about seven years for you to look at next month. So you could have five years to compare before COVID, COVID, and this year.
Okay.
It's, it's dropped, obviously. COVID, those two years were my biggest numbers.
When we offered free, it was, we got the biggest participation.
Absolutely.
Now we don't have, we've lost people, kids eating lunch.
And breakfast.
And breakfast.
Yes.
The good, the good news in New Hampshire from last night is they are looking at adjusting the poverty level by 300%, which means it would capture more students if families were willing to fill out the free and reduce form. So that is the good news in New Hampshire. We've heard of no news that though, New Hampshire is looking to go to free and reduce for everyone. They are just looking to adjust it so that more people would be eligible should they apply.
And that's the problem we're having right now is people applying, right?
That's a piece of it.
Definitely a piece of it.
Definitely a piece of it.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mary? Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Dr. Costa?
Okay, do you want me to do the permissions to accept first?
I think so.
Okay. So...
We, I don't know if we can talk about them, but then just vote on them at one.
Yep, we can do that. So we received a number of community donations that go to the eighth grade trip that I know that Ken would want to make sure we got into our meeting this evening. So we have hundred, I'll just read them all and then we can approve them.
Yep.
Sound good? So we have a hundred dollars from Melanie and Chris Muntz. We have $704.20 from the Community Oven. We have $250 from Preston Real Estate. We have $250 from The Merrills. We have $250 from Experienced Hampton. We have $1,400 from the Hampton Area Chamber of Commerce. Those are the ones for Washington DC. And then I have another check from Hampton Academy.
We'll do the Washington DC ones first. So can I have a motion to accept those? Wendy? Seconded, Frank? Discussion? All in favor? Okay, those are all accepted.
Yep. And then the other check that we'd like to bring to your attention is Hampton Academy has a $526.40 box top check. So that's great. They're, they're doing those electronically, so $526.40. So permission to accept that as well.
Motion to accept, Frank? Seconded, Wendy? Discussion? None? All in favor? Five zero.
Great. So just, just some highlights in my board report in that I've had just a wonderful time seeing so many wonderful, enriching activities in all three of the schools during my weekly walkthroughs. You know I spend time in, in one school a week. I, I make sure I get in. I do a very in-depth walkthrough. I get to sometimes be invited to special events. I was really impressed with the Artisan Residence as Tim, Mr. Lannan talked about at Center School and Coco Leflo's work on the power of yet. Also, Marston Schools, their book fair, the Warm Spirit Day, the Girls on the Run. Obviously Hampton Academy having their spring theater performance, Murder on the 517, which was fantastic. The oratoricals were just phenomenal, as you saw earlier this evening. And obviously recycled percussion came and it was just, yeah. Just outstanding. Wonderful, wonderful event. So really kudos to everyone for securing those funds. I know that it was, it really was. It was just amazing. And now they're gearing up for all of their spring sports and all of these wonderful extracurricular opportunities that really bring a sense of community to our schools. But also, I would say, just a sense of enthusiasm, camaraderie, and really warm spirit. So special thanks to all three schools for their work on that. You know that on March 23rd, we worked with SAU 21 and hosted our Safety and Security Task Force meeting. These are a part of our ongoing efforts that we work with a number of our first responders surrounding our Safety Task Force in our planning for that. Focus was specifically around what we're doing in our schools, but also speaking specifically in response to evacuation plans and alike. So great conversations with our teams, but also great conversations with our partners in SAU 21 and our first responders. We also had a tour of the rim, which was also nice to do as well as part of that as we're planning. I want to bring to your attention that policies continue to be updated. We, we brought you those policies. We did hand carry them as Friday was our meeting and we're going to bring those to you tonight for First Read. Those are policies that we have worked with our staff on to ensure that it is representing the needs of our districts. So we'll bring those to you tonight. Thursday night, Mrs. Antico and I will join John Nyhan from the Chamber of Commerce as part of their annual Toast to the Coast event, which will be at The Brook in Seabrook. We're looking forward to that. And obviously, Mr. DeLuca, Mrs. Riga spoke about Monday night. We worked with our legislators on a number of bills that are before the House and the Senate right now that will potentially impact our, our schools, districts, funding and alike. So we're looking forward to see what comes of those. But great partnership in our local legislators and great partnership in SAU 21 in working together as we think about our schools and we think about those potential bills that could impact all of us. So just wanted to bring that to you. A reminder that we have a 603 Bright Futures survey out from the Department of Education. They do ask that we please, please, please try to get as many staff, community members, parents to fill those out as those are used for us to set goals and objectives around the climate in our schools. So just to remind to everyone to please complete those by April 28th. Moving on, obviously, as the warmer weather comes, we are focusing more on our safety drills under the direction of our SROs. Those continue. Our mental health team continues to meet. We are looking at outreach with parent training, Hampton Pediatrics, our early education outreach specialists as we develop comprehensive pre-K to grade eight programming. In marking your calendars, I said this in my newsletter, but on May 11th, SAU 90 and 21 will present the documentary, which is brand new, hot off the press, Anxious Nation at Winnicott High School. Doors do open at 5 o'clock. And the show, it will be, the documentary will be shown at 5:30. It is about an hour and a half and then there'll be a panel discussion to follow. This is just a great opportunity for us as a community to talk about our children and how they feel about school and to think about how many, many students are feeling very anxious and what this means for us as a community. Our ongoing efforts around mental health and being sure that we're doing everything we can as a community. So we hope to see a good turnout on that, on that evening. March 31st, April 3rd, Elizabeth Henderson, Amber Levine, Dr. DeSilva Nafton and I attended the National Association of Curriculum Development Conference in Denver. By the way, ASCD is merging with ISTI. ISTI is the International Society for Technology and Education. These are two of the most reputable organizations. One that has been technology-focused for as long as we all can remember and the other one that's been curriculum-focused. All based on research and best practices. Going to be very interesting to see how these two merge and what that means. We're very excited about that. ASCD has always been a leader for professional development and it did not disappoint. The big message that we're going to share next month is going to be the conversations around children before content and really making sure our children are ready to learn. That was really a big message. This summer, we're going to host our Extended Learning Program for our students, but also there will be a Title I program this summer where students will have an opportunity to get some additional support in literacy and mathematics. That will be during the month of July. More details will come. There will be transportation also provided. So this is an opportunity for students who need that support to get it. We're glad to be able to offer that. You know our math work does continue with demonstrated success on the leadership level and the schools are specifically working on language arts. And we did host two community sessions with New Hampshire Listens on March 29th and April 4th. We had about 25 participants and a number of former students that came back to engage in conversations. It was really an informative evening and they do a really nice job leading those conversations. And I, and I guess I would say in closing that it's hard to believe we are in trimester three, but as the weather feels warmer today, we know that we clearly are in the home stretch. And I'm just pleased to see all that's, all that we have brought back since three years ago and where we are. And it's very exciting to be in school and you can just feel the energy in our students and as I walk around and see the excitement for learning and see students that are thriving and happy. It really is wonderful to see. And I think about how far we've come and I think it's a testament to our staff and our community for providing our children with quality education. So that's all I have.
Any questions for Dr. Costa?
I have a comment.
Comment?
I know that especially in the springtime, parents get so busy here, there, and everywhere with their kids doing a thousand different things. But I just want to reiterate again that 603 Bright Futures survey, it doesn't, it doesn't require parents to go out to a meeting or to take part in, in any of the myriad of activities that we offer for parents. And I know parents want to have, you know, be able to have their, obviously, they're our partners in education. So I would, again, recommend that you fill out this survey. It's on the website. You've sent it in newsletters. And again, as it's such a busy time and it's hard to get out to meetings, this is one way where parents can really make sure that you've got your, you know, your feelings and your thoughts and concerns mentioned. So...
Wendy?
What are we doing for parents? We're supporting children's mental health. We're supporting teachers' mental health. We're administrators' mental health. What are we offering for parents?
That's a great question. You know that I meet with my mental health team. I've been working with Emily Fixler. We've been talking specifically about offering a parent series. It's, it's interesting. I think that we offered several events over the course of the year. For example, you know, we offered Safety Night. We offered a night to talk about mental health at, with Winnicott High School. We, we also did, I'm trying to think of other evenings we've done, but we have done three evenings and we're going to do a fourth one in May. In addition, we are trying to work with the Seacoast, Seacoast?
Mental Health?
Yeah, Seacoast Mental Health on offering a parent series. And it seems like they too are struggling to find people to send to our schools. But it is something that is on our agenda for tomorrow. I know Dr. DeSilva Nafton and I have been well aware that this is something that we definitely want to help parents with, particularly as it rates, as it relates to their children. So I think it's a great question and it's something that we've been talking about. And I don't know, Dr. DeSilva Nafton, do you have more to share about that? I know Emily Fixler is our outreach worker, has been trying to get a parent series together. Yeah. It's, it seems like it's their challenge to have the resources to, to support the schools in this way right now. So it, it is, it's, it's, I, in fact, as I talk with our mental health team, one of the things that I hear and I talk to our teachers and our administrators is that there's a great need for it and they just don't have the providers available. It seems like these providers are so busy with their caseloads and, you know, the 988, that's really taken up a lot of our resources, that there's very little left over to address these kinds of things. But it's something that I will bring tomorrow again. I think it's a great question. I do think that Anxious Nation is something for our parents. It is a parent night. So I'm hoping that parents can get out, it's an opportunity to talk about it. So at least there is that coming.
Yeah.
Which I'm, I'm pleased about.
Any other questions for Dr. Costa?
Never enough, is it, Jenny?
No.
I agree. I feel that way.
And a lot of our problems that we have with our students stem from home.
Agreed. And of course, it's, and people finding the time to come out and...
Exactly. And nobody, it never happens in anybody's house because they don't want to admit that it happens in their house. And we all know that it can happen in our house, but it's hard.
Yep. We did do the suicide prevention and mental health too in the fall. So we had, we have, but there's always room for doing more and we're trying to build up more, but it means getting people to do that.
Is, is this 603 Bright Futures survey a place where parent input could make a difference in what we offer to parents?
I think the question's really more around the climate. But it's, I think there's, it's really more, it's, it's on a Likert scale so that it's not as much open-ended, but it, I think that it's something for us to think about as a district in terms of the My Voice survey. We may want to bring that back. It's been a while since we've done it. Think about it. We, we have done it twice before in my time here. It may be time to do a My Voice survey. I know that principals are hosting coffee chats. I know that those are things that we do do as well. I, I think that the other piece is, is that I know parents are very busy. In fact, one of the things that we're very concerned about is, is the PTA. The PTA has said that many people are, they, they're always looking for people to help out with some of these big events like the Harlem Wizards, which was wonderful, like the Halloween gathering they did, like Party on the Park they want to do on June 3rd. But they're finding that parents are so busy right now that they're not able to get the volunteers that they need to do to some of these bigger things. And I do think that that's also a piece of it. I think many people are really, are really out straight, right? And they're doing all they can to, you know, work their jobs and take care of their kids and I understand it. So it's been very challenging, even when you offer some of these things. We don't always get the, the crowds that we would like to. I think our Safety Night was a great example of that, right? We, we thought that we were hoping that we were going to get a great crowd. I think they were hopeful they were going to get a great crowd on suicide prevention. were hopeful they were going to get a great crowd on suicide prevention, we didn't, disappointingly. It's not to say we're not going to stop it, we're going to continue to do those things, but we'll just have to be more strategic about how we do that, when we do that. But your point's well taken.
Any other questions for Dr. Costa? Okay, Mariah?
Yeah, so I have the retiree stipends in the budget and everything's budgeted to date, we started working on sending out vendor letters, letting them know that we're going to be looking at our purchase orders and encumbrances, so to be mindful that June's coming quicker than not and to pay attention that we will be reaching out to them to get some final numbers coming up so that I have more of an idea of where we're going to be at. I resent the food service information to the state for our overage for surplus from last year's money that was from feeding students for free, we had a surplus of funds, so that could roll over for this year to be utilized, but they only let you utilize it for certain items and mostly for equipment, but I'm trying to see if they can let us utilize it for overage of cost, our food cost. So I'm waiting to hear back on that, if they let us utilize some of the funds for that, it will help our overage in food service and I won't be as worried about the general fund. So that's one thing I'm working on, I haven't heard back, but I will reach out again just to kind of nudge them so that I have more information for you guys next month. Mary's pulling a whole bunch of information together for us, we'll do some pie charts or line charts or whatever to see the numbers for the past couple of years, get an idea of what our cost of food is and how many, how much we're selling right now and so we can come up with a really firm number of what we should do for next year. But like Mary said, we definitely do need to update that policy and procedure and place it either on our website or in the handbooks so that we have a leg to stand on when we are trying to collect funds from the shortage of the students' accounts. That's food service. My grants, we're working hard to get Essar finished and closed up. Like Keith said, we are doing a second round of RFPs for the HVAC. I can't believe how much things changed in one year for cost, it's insane. So we are trying to do it in two sections, the front of the building and the back of the building so that we can price it out, so that we'll have phases if needed, so we're looking at that right now, it's posted on our website, if anybody's interested in looking at that. And then our final numbers for health insurance came in and for health, it came in at 4.7 increase, which is the exact amount our GMR was, and dental was 1.5, which was exactly what our GMR was. 1.5, that's what I said, yeah. So that is finalized, we're going to be signing off on that. With that being said, next year, we will need to look at the health insurance because one of our plans that we offer will no longer exist, so some of those things will be, I will be researching and changing in the near future. So that's the exciting world of the accounting department.
Anyone have any questions for Mariah?
Well, does it make sense when we are losing money on hot lunch, people are not buying hot lunch and breakfast? This board is going to contemplate whether to rise the prices or not next month, is that what we're doing?
I misunderstood what you said.
Were you talking about raising food prices next month?
Well, we're going to talk about either pushing them up or pushing them down or leaving them alone, but we're going to, we have to talk about them, I think.
We will bring all the surrounding school rates too, we pulled all that, we pull, we're pulling everything.
That's, that's great information.
And the cost of a meal and what we're charging for a meal and.
That's all wonderful information.
Last time we upped it was like three years ago, four years ago?
I just want to put it in everyone's mind, if they're not buying it at $1.50, they're certainly not going to buy it at $1.75. I'm just saying. I'm just saying Frank. And food prices for families are not going down.
Right.
And that's probably why they're not buying hot lunch.
Well, be thinking about it folks, because it's going to be up for discussion.
Or not having as many options, right?
I know.
As many options, or do we need all of the people that we have, like there's.
Okay, you're going to do.
We're going to look at it all.
And you're sure that the 67,000 is going away?
I don't think it's all going away. I'm trying to work with them to adjust some of it.
Okay.
We'll see, we have a surplus. They just will only utilize it in certain forms and most of it's equipment, but I'm trying to get them to say yes to the 10, 12% that foods increased. Take that money and towards it. And help Title I.
Do you need someone besides yourself to advocate or to, you know, call these people, talk to these people?
If I get nowhere, yes, I will give a shout out. I definitely will ask for help. Yep.
Any other questions for Mariah?
Yeah, that's another big thing in education.
No such thing as vouchers.
Yeah, the Freedom Accounts.
Okay.
And it's my understanding that the charter school is not going to open for a year, another year?
The one that was supposed to, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, still moving around on the agenda. Second, public comment. Sorry, can't hear you.
You're welcome to, if you want to ask it Megan, I can reach out for you tomorrow or we could probably get, I'd be happy to help.
Megan Holbrook, 31 Presidential. I just wanted to hear more about this discipline disproportionality, I hadn't heard of it before, so I wasn't familiar with it, so I was just trying to, she had mentioned something about we don't have any issues with it and I was just wondering if it could be explained a little bit more about like what that actually means, so.
I can ask Dr. Lois DeSilva Napton to get in touch with you?
Yeah, that would be great.
I would be happy to.
Actually be nice if she stayed so that when public comment comes around, there's someone here to answer it, but since she's not, that'd be great if I could get that answer back.
The paperwork that we had did give an explanation and essentially, obviously, Dr. DeSilva Napton is the person to really respond, but it looked as though the state looks at rates of discipline among our special education population and our non-special education population and they look to see if they are proportional. So what they don't want to see is you don't want to see that your special education students, their discipline rates are significantly higher than your non-special ed population.
That's exactly what it is?
So then how do they, how is that determined then? Like, I mean, I'm not necessarily saying that special education students have a higher, you know, propensity to, you know, be like misbehave or need to be disciplined or things like that, but like what if there are more that actually have disciplinary issues or things like that, I mean, how is that avoided?
I think, again, I think these are great questions and I would, I think Dr. DeSilva Napton would be the one to best answer it. I know that we are required at the end of every year to submit our data to the state and that is how a lot of it is determined, so my guess is that was how it was determined. So we have to, at the end of the year, before June 30th, we have to submit all of our, basically all of our data regarding student discipline to the state and that's how they determine it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of retroactive if you will, so by June 30th for this year, we'll have to submit it again. So this was probably based on last year.
It says it was a total, it's a three-year analysis of the risk ratio?
Yeah, and they do.
In target groups?
Yeah, and so they are always looking at that, they're pretty, there's some pretty tight parameters around it. But again, I think these are, these are great questions for her. I will pass that along.
You'll pass them along, I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I would suggest now that we go into non-public under 91A3, Roman numeral 2. Do you want to do a first read? Subsection A and the same numbers, 91A3, Roman numeral 2, subsection L.
Do we? We skipped policies?
Yeah, we've skipped a few things, but there's a reason.
Okay.
Okay? So that's the motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Frank. Roll call, Frank?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. Okay folks, we're back in session. We are going to deal with all of the policies, I think most of them are going to be a first read, right?
I make a motion to do the policies at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you Frank. Seconded Jenny, all those in favor?
Aye.
So let's do the minutes of the March 21st regular meeting. We have a motion for those.
I'll make a motion to accept those.
Moved Frank, seconded Wendy. Any discussion changes? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, and then we had issue number one, non-public.
I make a motion to accept.
Seconded Jenny. I'm just trying to see if these are the same ones. Yeah.
It's the same one.
We did. Okay. Well, they all say issue number one.
They all say 712.
I think.
712, all three.
Yeah, I'm thinking we should hold off on this, Mariah, until we, because these are all, they're all identical. So let's hold off on these and we'll let you just kind of.
Yes, I wrote different topics.
Okay, so we'll revisit these.
Yeah, these are all the same.
Yeah. We'll revisit these, okay, and I think that's all we have.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Moved Frank to adjourn. Seconded Jenny, all those in favor? Aye, next meeting is May 9th. Thank you.